It's seven o'clock. I'm ready whenever you are, Mr. Einbinder.
Aye.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, according to Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Farkas.
Here.
Councilman Legati.
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Here.
Councilman Peretti.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you please rise, we'll have a moment of silence followed by a salute to our flag. Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes from August sixteenth. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now we will go on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill List Resolution two zero eight dash twenty twenty-one?
Resolution two zero eight, twenty twenty-one is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of five million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted?
Second.
Have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Peretti. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to pay the bills.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is comments from the audience on the Consent Agenda Resolutions two zero nine, twenty twenty-one through two two zero, twenty twenty-one. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please step to the microphone, identify yourself to the clerk, say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion, I'll close audience comments, and I will move on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any questions, or does anyone want to pull any resolutions from the consent agenda? There being no requests to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted?
Second.
Have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolutions two zero nine, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to ordinance public hearing and adoption. This is the public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one dash one five zero two, an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-four, comprehensive development of revised general ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, to define smoke shop and vape shop, prohibit smoke shops and vape shops in all residential districts, the B one, B two, B two A, and B three commercial districts, all industrial districts, the residential senior citizen housing zone, and the community service zone, and to permit smoke shops and vape shops in the B four highway strip commercial zone and B five highway strip commercial zone within the Borough of Milltown, and since the introduction, full copies of the Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty and four-thirty P M. Monday through Friday. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two?
Make a motion, second.
Motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Legati. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing on Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two. Anyone from the audience wish to speak? Okay, so may I have a motion to close the public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Legati. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we'll, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading, and that it be published according to law.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Peretti. Are there any comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Epstein.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
And Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh two.
Okay. This is the public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three, an ordinance of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter eight of the Borough Code of the Borough of Milltown entitled School Age Child Care Program, and since introduction, full copies of Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty A M. and four-thirty P M. Monday through Friday. I have a motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing on Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on Ordinance twenty-one one five oh three. Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing for Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three is now closed, so I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and it be published according to law.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Peretti. Any comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt Ordinance twenty-one fifteen oh three.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the reports. We'll start with the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning, Councilman Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have a financial, a finance administration plan report tonight. I have a short report for, from the revitalization committee. Just as an update, Milltown Day is scheduled for October second, Saturday, with a rain date of Sunday, October third. Registration materials are available on our website. Registration spots are still open, so if anyone would still like to sponsor or register, that can be done. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Phil, but the finance committee I know has been meeting throughout the summer, and is, I heard exciting news about putting money aside for tree removal and some other things. Is that something that we can announce to the public?
Jeanette?
So yes, when we did meet, it was, we had a discussion about funding the removal of the trees that the D P W has not been able to do because of the size and all of that. So the trees have been marked, quotes have been obtained, and funding, you'll see an ordinance come on possibly the next meeting to fund that, so that can be scheduled, so the trees can be taken care of. As far as the other capital projects planned, we're still working on the ordinance for that as well.
So once we pass the ordinance, then we can get those trees?
Yes, and that will be a separate ordinance than the other, because that's going to be fully funded in-house, so we'll be able to take care of that.
Thanks to the finance committee for putting that all together. I know that's been an issue for quite a while, so we're happy to hear that.
Now, Jeanette, just to verify, these are trees that are either sick or dying, are a danger to falling at some point in time, sidewalks are really bad. These are not trees just to say we want our tree removed. These are trees that have issues.
No, so we did have requests, so we had the infamous tree removal request list that D P W has done a wonderful job at chipping away, and the utility department has also, you know, they really took charge this past year and got a lot of those trees taken down. And so these are the remaining trees that they just are not equipped to remove. And along with that, we were also planning on doing a chipping project with that as well, because the last round of tree removal, the chipping didn't occur, so we got prices for those two, and that's what we're looking to do.
Perfect, thank you.
Great.
By chipping, stumping?
Thank you, stumping, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next we will move on to the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Legati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first report today is the Milltown Fire Department, monthly report, August twenty twenty-one. Drills three, meetings one, fire calls seventeen, special assignments four, work details five, total incidents thirty. Our training, aerial and ground ladder training at Speedway and Hose Company, high-rise pack training in preparation for the Middlesex County Fire Academy live burn on October sixth. Members sign up for classes at the Middlesex Ca, Middlesex County Fire Academy. Tank truck fires and elevator rescue operations. Apparatus maintenance, engine sixty-two has its brakes adjusted and serviced, weren't holding, causing truck to move when applied. Engine seventy-two had bad fuel injector and leaking water tank. Injector was replaced, repairs ongoing. Ladder seventy-three, ongoing, ongoing out for preventative maintenance service servicing. Aerial testing set up for October seventh, pump testing is on September twenty-sixth. Equipment maintenance, four chain rescue saws taken out of service. Blowhard fan battery malfunction being replaced from manufacturer. Ground ladder testing on September twenty-sixth, quarterly air testing completed. Members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse on Monday nights at six-thirty, or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Stephen Batalia, Chief of the Fire Department. My second report is the monthly Milltown Police Department report. Between August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and September twelfth, twenty twenty-one, police have responded to one thousand eighty-one calls for service. During this period, police conducted one hundred and twenty-seven radar details in numerous locations. Police made one hundred and ninety-eight motor vehicle stops. Three criminal arrests were made during this period, which included assault and theft. Police responded to fourteen motor vehicle accidents, which involved only minor injuries. Thank you to our residents for their cooperation and patience during and after our recent flooding. Thank you to the Milltown Fire Department, the Milltown Rescue Squad, Milltown D P W, and Utilities for their tireless efforts and teamwork during Ida flooding. Residents who suffered property loss and damages from flooding should visit milltownnj.org for FEMA registration and information. The police, the police department regretfully announced the passing of Milltown School Crossing Guard Kenneth Chip Davidson. Ken's loyalty, commitment, and dedication to the community are appreciated, and we are sadly, and he will be sadly missed. Our sincere condolences to his family and friends. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, non-emergent type calls to seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-one-one-zero-zero. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use nine-one-one. Residents are reminded to report any concerns and/or complaints by using the official Borough website, or by calling the Milltown Police Department directly. The Milltown Police Department does not monitor and will not react, reply, or respond to comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Stay safe, and thank you, Chief Brian Cannelli. Chief Brian Cannelli, who is also our O E M coordinator, sent out a nixle. We have it on our website. He wants everyone in Milltown to be well aware of the following statement I'm going to read concerning FEMA and some, you know, hopefully some relief for some of the people that, businesses and homeowners that had damage. So public notice from the Milltown Police Department, FEMA, a FEMA representative will be in Milltown tomorrow, September fourteenth, to examine damage from Tropical Storm Ida. In coordination with the Middlesex County O E M, the FEMA representatives will meet with the Milltown O E M officials to tour damaged areas of the municipality from ten A M. to five P M. FEMA representatives will be at the Milltown Municipal Building at thirty-nine Washington Avenue to meet with residents and business owners seeking assistance. I spoke to the chief earlier today. He wanted everybody to know that a FEMA representative will be here. If you had damage, if you have pictures, bring whatever you can. They'll get you started on the process to try and maybe recovering some money, or some damaged furniture, or whatever. They will be, they will be glad to help you get started, and they'll be here tomorrow from ten to five in this building here. Bringing up FEMA and the tropical storm, I too would like to thank our Milltown Police Department, our Milltown Fire Department, our Milltown Rescue Squad, our D P W, and our Utilities Department as well. It was a crazy, crazy, you know, night, and it didn't end early for a lot of those guys going twenty-four, some of them even thirty-six hours of being on call and ready to do what needed to be done. And it amazes me that, you know, they get up the next day and they collect garbage in Milltown when they were up for thirty-six hours, but yet they still continue to do other things that are expected of them. It's a, it's a great little town we live in, and I'm so amazed that they do this on any kind of an emergency, so I'd like to thank them all personally for a job well done. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more. Next we have the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with all work orders, pump checks, and workouts, the Order Department has the following report. Water meter replacement is ongoing. The yearly valve exercising program, as mandated by the Department of Environmental Protection, has begun and will continue until completed, which should be approximately the end of this month. Utility Department, along with the water operator, is working on completing the yearly D E P inspection. The Water Department, along with the contractor, repaired a forced sewer main on our line on Georgia's Road in North Brunswick. The Department is scheduling in the next two weeks to have hydrant replaced across from three-twenty-nine Clay Street. Two more hydrant replacements will follow and will be reported on when completed. Hydrant flushing will be occurring in October. A reminder will go out prior to starting. And as always, please check Channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for water updates. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next we have the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To start with the D P W, along with all regular curbside collections, the D P W has the following to report. Road repairs took place at First Street, Lincoln Avenue, George Street, Joffrey Avenue, Harkins Road, Janet Court, Chestnut Street, Bruce Court, Desmond Avenue, and Violet Terrace. Basin repair also took place on Violet Terrace. Trees were removed or pruned on Cuthal Avenue and across parks around town. A dangerous tree limb that had been hit by lightning on the corner of Townsend and Joffrey was removed. For the August twenty-second and the September first storm, so that's the storm that happened a week prior and then Ida that followed, the D P W did the following to prepare. They made sure all emergency equipment was fueled up and prepped for storm use. They loaded trucks with cones and barricades for possible road closures, and they cleaned all catch basin lids of debris to allow for optimal drainage. During the storms, the D P W assisted with road closures at various locations due to high water levels. After the storms, the D P W started to clean up the debris around town, and this is still continuing, and they will do so until debris are cleared. And additionally, they assisted residents with bulk removal due to flood damage in homes. Line painting has taken place on Route five and will be ongoing around town. Street sweeping of the entire town has been completed, including a follow-up sweeping for areas that were hit by the storms. Upcoming events, Milltown Day will be held on Saturday, October second. Please stop by and visit the D P W for giveaway, visit the D P W for giveaways and info. And I think by that they mean visit at the D P W at Milltown Day. There will be a shredding event held in Milltown on Saturday, October ninth, from nine A M. to twelve noon, or until the truck is full. Concrete collection will be taking place October eleventh through October fifteenth. Please call extension one-eight-seven for an appointment. As always, you can check on Channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for D P W updates. Additionally, the Green Team met this past Wednesday. It was a very short meeting. We just discussed information that we wanted to include at the Milltown Day, because we're going to have a shared table with the Environmental Commission and us. And then for the Milltown Rescue Squad, they start before the storms, they had started going back to in-person meetings, and during the storms, they, I'm sure everyone knows, they moved their equipment to the D P W Fire Complex on Washington Avenue, and they responded throughout the entire event. I fortunately to announce that the Rescue Squad did get some water during the Ida, the Storm Ida, and they will be reaching out to their insurance about that. They will be having, last year they did this as well for their fundraiser on Borough property, but this year they're going to do it on, at the American Legion. They're going to be hosting a drive-up donation, because they're not going door-to-door this year as they have done in previous years. Hopefully this is the last year they'll have to do it. So on September twenty-third, from four-thirty P M. to eight-thirty P M., the Rescue Squad will be at the American Legion Parking Lot to collect donations for anyone that is able to drop them off. And as always, you can also mail your donations in. And they will also be collecting donations on Milltown Day when they're on standby down there. And that's all we have to offer.
Was the date in that, Anna, the drop-off?
The first one is September twenty-third from four-thirty P M. to eight-thirty P M. in the American Legion Parking Lot. It's a Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Next we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilwoman Morgan O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Environmental Commission met on August twenty-fifth. We did not have a quorum, but we did still have an active discussion, even though no decisions or actions were taken. We spoke about things that were going on with the planning board, code and zoning issues, the spotted lanternfly issue, issues around the Schwendman property, the stormwater ordinance. I'll have a little sidebar about that in a moment. Anna has already touched on the fact that the Environmental Commission will share space with the Green Team for Milltown Day, and they're also working with the Borough to do potentially an electronics drop-off on the same day. We discussed things around the Lawrence Brook Watershed Partnership, things like activities and speakers that are coming up, and the Anjack Conference, which is coming up in October. Our next meeting is September twenty-second. That is the fourth Tuesday. Just wanted to point that out, because there happened, this happens to be a month that has five Tuesdays. We are maintaining meetings on Zoom for the moment. The sidebar part about the stormwater ordinance is that the Environmental Commission is putting together sort of a subcommittee to work on that, and we have invited Mike and Lou from C M E. to come to our October meeting to discuss that stormwater ordinance further. This was not part of the discussion at the Environmental Commission meeting, but it does have an environmental twist to it. One of our nixle messages that went out from the Borough today indicated that there would be mosquito spraying tonight to close windows and keep the pesticides outside. There was no Board of Health meeting in the month of August, but there will be one in the month of September, fourth Tuesdays, maintaining on Zoom as well. And the Library Board meeting, second Tuesdays, is tomorrow night. That too is also on Zoom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And we have now the Department of Recreation, Councilman James Brett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For recreation, our A M. and P M. SAC programs have begun on September first. At this time, we still have a few spots available for the A M. program. To be waitlisted for the P M. program, please call the Recreation Office at seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-twenty-one-hundred, extension one-four-one. We are still looking for additional SAC employees, specifically program aides. So if you or anyone you know is interested, please also contact the Recreation Office. The Milltown Borough Pool closed on Monday, September sixth. We had a successful season and wanted to thank all our staff and patrons who made this possible. We look forward to seeing everyone next season. Youth Fall Soccer and Tennis Registration is now closed. Tennis is scheduled to begin on September seventeenth, and Fall Soccer beginning on September eighteenth. We still need additional coaches for our Fall Soccer program. If you are interested in volunteering to coach, please contact the Recreation Department as soon as possible. Yoga registration is open at this time. You can register at the following website, www-register.capturepoint.com/boroughofmilltown. There's also a link to Community Pass on our Borough of Milltown website on the Recreation tab. Men's Basketball and Volleyball Registration will be open by the end of this week. Please remember, if you are interested in renting any Milltown Park, please contact the Recreation Department directly to acquire a park facility usage form. Please note, we are still accepting anything non-perishable food donations for our Milltown neighbors in need, as well as for Menosha's County Food Bank, which also supports Milltown residents. You may drop items off at Borough Hall and place them in the green bins in the hallway of the main entrance during normal business hours. Please do not leave food in the police entrance vestibule. I want to say thank you to the Recreation Department and the American Legion for partnering together to host another really special September eleventh Remembrance Service, and thank you to all our residents that came out and attended. That's the conclusion of the rec report. I have a couple of committee reports. For the Human Relations Committee, the Human Relations Committee met on September For the Human Relations Committee, the Human Relations Committee met on September 9th instead of our normal first Tuesday in order to recognize Rosh Hashanah. The committee has created a community survey to guide the work that the committee will undertake in the next year. This will allow us to gather the inputs from our current and formal residents about community engagement, accessibility, inclusion, and diversity. Please look for the link to the survey on the Borough website under the News/section. The committee looks forward to seeing everyone at Miltown Day and hopes you can stop by our tent. The Historical Preservation Committee would like to welcome Barbara Santoro as a newest official member. The committee will also be in attendance at Miltown Day with some live demonstrations. Please make sure to stop by and learn new ways to preserve your home's history. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. And also thanks to the Department of Rec for another successful full season. We've just had a good closing day, and thanks to all the employees that worked there over the summer as well. Next, we will go to the administrative report, Jeanette Larrick.
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have our engineer report, Mr. Mike McCallum.
Madam Mayor, no report tonight.
Mike, may I ask you a question? So at the last meeting, we talked about the water main on Chestnut. We were going to start, we had just announced that we had the $750,000 that we got from the state a couple of years ago, and we were going to get, be going on that. And then unfortunately, and ironically, the very next day, there was a break there. So any update on when we're going to be?
We should be advertising bids by the end of the week.
Great.
Okay.
Good, thank you. And our attorney report, Mr. Peter Vignol.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and finally, my report. I have really no report. I just wanted to say that, listening to everyone's report up here, I'm very pleased to see the way that we've come together in, you know, good times and bad times. We, thanks to the Rec Department and the American Legion and all of our volunteer services, we had a really nice service for September 11th, and we all came together to get through the remnants of Ida that really damaged Miltown. And I couldn't be more proud of how the Chief Canelli and the OEM worked with the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Rescue Squad, DPW, utilities to, you know, while some people had some property damage, I'm happy that everyone stayed safe. And all of the departments worked really well together, and the employees that came in, as everyone said, the very next day to keep the services up. So I thank all of them, and I hope that you don't have too much damage, and that if you do, you come tomorrow and use the FEMA services. So now, we will move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before us this evening? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the councils' attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment was not structured as a question and answer. If a member of the public has any specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office or official. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. So I'll open it up for audience comments, and it's nice to see that we have an audience.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Michael Solney, 46, South Brook Drive. I'm here to comment on an issue that I believe the committee is aware, but maybe not the severity and the frequency with which it affects my neighbors and myself. We absolutely empathize and sympathize with our neighbors from around town having dealt with the Ida flooding. And we're very grateful for Miltown's response and the various agencies. We're not here to complain about that. We got water ourselves because we always get water. In fact, it wasn't so much Ida, but the storm, and forgive me, I don't remember the name, the storm from August 21st. Was that Harvey?
Henri.
Henri, pardon me. And that one did a real number on us, again, which was something we've become accustomed to. That was the night that my wife worked a late shift at the emergency room and got home, and our road was impassable. Those of us who live on South Brook between Cuthal and Hill Street know that's a pretty frequent problem. It doesn't take a tropical storm for that to happen, for us to get water in our basements, for our street to become flooded, for us to, at times, have to watch helplessly as the water in our sump pits rises, and we're trying to bail it out with smaller pumps to, out the window with hoses, trying to support one another. So it's really quite an ordeal. And we, I've been here for over 19 years now, and we've gone through the basement renovation, and we've upgraded from one sump pump to two powerful sump pumps. We've done, I think, about as much as we can do. We have other neighbors who have as many as three sump pumps. On that night, on August 21st, most of us got several inches, if not more, than a foot of water. What I'm trying to get at is, I believe that we've all accepted the fact that we live very close to a large pond and in front of a brook that has been filled in for the most part, and we accept that water is going to be a part of our existence there. But we've done, I feel, as much as we as residents can do to ameliorate those, the issues. So what I'm wondering and what I'm hoping to glean from this, from these comments is if there are remedies being considered, if there are interventions that the committee has researched, I'm hoping that those can be shared. And if we are considering, if there's something that can be done with the brook behind us, or I won't pretend to understand anything that could be done to help out with the flooding in our neighborhood. But I'm hoping that if there are potential, potential solutions, or at least potential remedies, that those can conceivably be acted on with some urgency because we are, aside from the financial toll, you know, our neighbors dread ever leaving town for any period of time lest they come home to three feet of water in their basement. So it's taken a mental toll on a lot of us, and I'm just hoping that there's something that can be done sooner rather than later for the sake of, for the sake of our little area. Thank you.
So I will just make you aware that after Henri, I received some emails from residents, and I spoke to our head of the Department of Public Works, and we also talked to our Borough Engineer, who I believe stopped by shortly thereafter before Ida. And there were some remedies, and Anna or Randy, I don't know, or Mike, if you want to speak to this, there was some remedies done in the brook, but they're aware of it, and I believe that they, we've begun to have deeper discussions on what to do. And I'm sure it's exhausting, and I feel for you, and I know that there's a lot of residents that are having the same issue, but, you know, we are certainly aware of what's going on there. And it seems like it's been really bad the last two storms. Mike, I don't know if you want to chime in at all.
That's correct, Mayor. We have discussed it with your Public Works Director, and we are putting a plan together to see what can be done. It's a complex one, as the homeowner indicated, and it is a sympathetic situation we're in, but it's a complex one too, unfortunately. But we'll do what we can to help and see what goes through and resolve it.
The Borough has done, you know, the Department of Public Works has gone out several times and cleared the brook. Surprisingly, they told me that they trapped, I think it was nine beavers that were back there that caused dams, or built dams.
And they're looking into more now. They're looking for approvals to at least take care of that piece. That's only one of the, a handful of situations over there.
We were going to also rely a little bit on the county that has, like, mosquito control that goes back there, and the engineers had some other thoughts. So it's something that, you know, we're aware of. I don't know, you know, to what degree it can do an improvement, but I'm sure at this point, any, every bit will help. Anyone else have any?
If you had damage from Ida, and FEMA is going to be here tomorrow, I would definitely recommend you come and start a claim case with them and...
That's just for Ida. That's not for?
No, that's just for Ida.
The storm. That's where we got hammered.
I know.
We have nothing to do with Ida. I didn't really, we didn't get too much.
I was just reiterating the Ida FEMA thing.
I guess also the Menosha County is, there's a project down at the end of South Brook and Cuthal. They're going to enlarge the culvert there, which should allow more water to pass through there. It won't get bottled up and back up into that area. That has, there was some preliminary work. I don't exactly know. Do you know, Mike, where it stands right now?
I think that it's supposed to be bid in the springtime.
Okay. Certainly not soon enough for you, but it's coming. It's coming. I think, you know, we all recognize the issues, and with the help of the county, we'll get something done there.
I mean, the, you know, it's always been a troubled area, but now that the storms have gotten more severe and, you know, one right on top of the other, it's not the same as it used to be. And I mean, we're all aware of that, and we will make the state and other people aware that, you know, our small-town infrastructure can only handle so much, and we may need some help. Any other member of the audience? Mr. Weisberg.
Lee Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive. First off, any contact with the turnpike from last time? Nothing? Okay.
What was it last time?
It was about the drain.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I think maybe the Ida got in the way, so we'll...
Yeah, well, I feel for these people.
I know.
And, you know, I hear, you know, put in another drain, whatever. This goes back a long time. This is not new. This place has flooded many times over the years. We have a dam that doesn't function. Those sluice gates have not worked. Been in operation a long time. I've written to the state years back, trying to find out who owns the dam. Same discussion. Don't know. I think that's really sad, okay? The turnpike, we know, Mike, 30 years ago widened. Multiple lanes. All that water drains into Miltown. It all comes down to the brook. It all gets jammed. Doesn't matter where, you know, it all comes there. South Brunswick put in a lot of new housing, putting in more housing, more water coming down. I've said it for years. Assemblyman Danielson was here. Did anybody ask him about dredging this brook and cleaning it out? The county.
What would you think that would do?
It would help. It's got to help some.
It would absolutely help.
Well, fortunately, it will...
Where does it flood? Does it flood downstream?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, in our area, but down below it doesn't.
Farrington, Farrington backs up, fills up, and then the water backs up to us. The people who control the level there is the New Brunswick Water Authority. Every time there's going to be a storm, we contact them. They open up the gates downstream to lower the level to allow the water flow to flow through.
I understand that.
Okay, well, that's...
Historically, you brought back aerial photography, whatever. This was all water. There's no weeds. There's no trees, nothing else. Just water. It flowed. The dam worked. Like I said, this stuff doesn't work anymore. I say, Mike, once again, I don't know. Does FEMA contribute to flood control projects, or is it just Army Corps?
The Borough has referred your concerns, the Borough's concerns, to Army Corps some time ago. It's got to be over 10 years ago. And they have not gone through and listed as a project. They've made some commentary. And that comment would be to put a flood wall in and around the brook. They also indicated the cost would be so astronomical that they didn't think FEMA would ever finance it. So the answer to the question is that they have looked at this, since the last major storm, probably far back as Irene. And they basically indicated it was the cost to benefit of the project would not make sense for the country, unfortunately. Forgive me, I don't say that I agree with them, but this is the response they gave.
Who actually controls it, though? Who makes the complaint to Army Corps? Is it the town, the county, the state senators?
The Borough did through the OEM office. That's how they did it. That's really how it's done. The OEM is your point of contact, and they work with the FEMA folks like you're going to hear tomorrow when FEMA comes. That's the best time. It sounds like the Borough is prepared to have that conversation with them. Unfortunately, when you actually start working with FEMA, you begin to see how much of a heavy lift it is to get it up, to get it even through Congress to finance the project. I don't suggest you don't, you give up. The Borough hasn't given up. You have an application in there. It's been discussed with FEMA and the Army Corps. But you're, you know, they have to look at where the damages are, and this is how they do it. I'm not suggesting I agree with their process, but they look at what it is, the cost of the impact is. How many people are inundated? How many people moved from houses? How many people's houses were lost? And then they weigh it, compare the other projects through the other. I don't know how many municipalities are all over the country, but that's how it's done. It's a crude-type, hard awakening when you actually see their process.
Like I said, I appreciate that. You know, CME, you guys deal with Spotswood too, right?
Yes, we do.
And Spotswood did Devo Lake, right?
Yes, we did.
I mean, they were going to take that on themselves, and then they did get funding.
They did. Different reasons, though. You know, as Councilman President Farquhar has indicated, your situation is a little different here, and the silt occupies the area the water occupies. So dredging, while it would make the pond look better, there's a lot of complications with it. And as far as getting you some type of storage area, it's just, it's too flat there. So the ability to go through and get much storage would be minimized.
Like I said, I'm looking for something that's functional. I know, Devo Lake, to me, was a big area. They took out a lot of material.
They did.
You know, compared to this, I just don't get it.
Oh, it's a function of, you're talking about how to fix the flooding problem. That's where you're directed.
Well, if you dredge it, I mean, it's not that deep now. It's all weeds. You know, if you dredged it, fixed the dam so the sluice gates work, so you can lower water, it's got to help.
Unfortunately, the storage area of the pond is not large enough to, I could give you numbers, but the pond would have to be probably 10 times as large to go through and make any appreciable impact. You can't imagine how many gallons of water come in a storm like that. I don't want to tell you there's no answers.
I understand. I get it. I mean, you know, like I said, I appreciate that. Like I said, if you did dredge, it's got to help. Below the dam, like you said, all that debris gets in there. The trees are there, which weren't there years ago. It all stops everything, stops the flow. Everything comes down, gets stuck in the trees, you know? Like I said, if you straightened it out, like I said, have somebody study it. Come up with something. Like I said, it's just been going on forever, you know?
So to your original point about all the building in South Brunswick, I know that the state has now had some bills proposed to deal with the building on a more regional basis. So in other words, if South Brunswick and Monroe and other places are building huge fulfillment centers that are taking away the farmland, that where does that rainwater go? It comes and...
It comes here.
It just was that town and that planning board. Now, you know, the adjacent towns or the towns that would be affected could have some input into that as well. I mean, I think you may see more movement regionally, given the absolute horrific nature of the last two storms and how it affected New Jersey. No town can prepare for a once-in-a-500-year storm every five years. So I hope that the federal government, the state government, and the county will all align to help us. I mean, there's only so much that Miltown can do. We will certainly, you know, advocate for any help that we can get because we are affected quite often from... quite often from the rainwater that comes from other towns. So we will certainly ask, and, you know, like I always say, it doesn't hurt to ask for help or what can be done, whether we get it or not, that's another issue.
Well, when Assemblyman Danielson was here, like you said, and you got money for water issues in town.
For water line.
I understand, but he said, yeah, clean water. Lawrence Brook is a water source for, I had a big area. I just want somebody to start pushing it up the ladder. Write more letters, whatever you got to do.
We will.
And see what happens, you know? Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I will close Audience Comments and move on to Councilment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of council comments. In addition to the great job that our Borough workers did during the tropical storm, there was, and I hate to point out one particular person, but I was very, very impressed and amazed with a particular worker here at the Borough that went above and beyond his actual job. We have someone that works here, his name is Charlie Miller, and he does our janitorial services here. And I got to tell you, when the Borough building flooded and I was in here, that gentleman went, just jumped into action. I couldn't keep up with him. He just went, I got to do this, I got to do that, I got to pick this up the floor so it doesn't get ruined, I got to get it. I mean, it wasn't even his job, but he amazed me and impressed me that, I hate to single out one particular person, but I thought that that needed to be said.
No, that's very nice. I couldn't, I totally agree. Thank you, Charlie, for keeping our building clean, safe. Much appreciated.
The other thing is, is that I would like to wish all of our September birthdays a happy birthday. I know I have a few that I've missed, so I just wanted to say happy birthday to everybody in September. Brings me to the September 11th memorial service we had. I'd like to thank the American Legion there for hosting us. Like to thank the Rec Department for setting it all up. Many people might know, I keep my 9/11 ID in my nightstand, and it's a very, you know, has a place in my heart for me, for all the losses there, all the friends, all the families. And it's probably my last one that I'll be up here at Council to experience, so I just wanted to, you know, thank the Recreation Department, the American Legion, and just, you know, never forget all those people, because they really gave everything for us. And that would be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I know it's council comments, but I forgot, I should have said when I thanked everyone that I thank everyone up here, because I don't know if everyone realizes how many calls. Everybody checks with their departments. Everybody checks through all the emergencies, utilities, DPW, public safety. So it really was a team effort, especially with IDA. I know I talked to Councilwoman Gady about safety, you know, all the way up until after midnight, and, you know, we're glad that everyone's safe and that, you know, it could have been a lot worse. So I thank all of you as well. Any other council comments? If not, we'll close Council Comments, and I will ask the council for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move. Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, suggested by Councilwoman Zambrana. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.